Okay, Paul Jones, Ben Vanoy, are you, can you hear us?
Paul Jones, Ben.
I can hear you, Commissioner.
Okay, Ben is here. And Bert is here physically as well as remotely. Well, we welcome everybody for today's commission meeting. As we always do, we'll invite someone from the public to offer a prayer, reading, or thought, and lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here who would like to do either? Please. Which are you gonna do?
Huh? I can give a prayer.
Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can be here today. We're thankful for those that are giving their time and efforts to make this county a great place to live. We're thankful for the police and firefighters and all those that risk their lives to make sure that this is a safe place to be. We're so thankful for this place, for the beautiful mountains and beautiful lake and beautiful people that live here. Please bless the commissioners as they make their decisions, that they will be inspired, that they'll be guided, that they'll be able to make the right decisions for our county. We're so thankful for thy love for us, heavenly Father. We love thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Bryce Brady.
Yeah.
Rudy, thank you.
Please join me in showing our respect and love for our country and our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rudy. Okay, as we do, we are going to review the regular agenda items and then those that we've already previously had read through and have no questions about, we will then move them to consent items or consent agenda as approved. So at this point, we'll go through number one through 10. And I think we should hold five and six.
And seven.
And seven. What was that?
I was wondering, seven as well.
Seven, okay. So five, six, and seven, we'll hold those. Nine and 10 appear to be one of the same thing, just continuation. Okay.
Nine and 10 are actually separate items.
Okay.
Because my understanding is you couldn't fit out the deeds in nine, so you had to put them in 10 as well.
Right, there's 13 deeds.
Right, I went.
We can only put 10 on the, on the system, so that's why there's two separate items. But they're all, it's all the same.
Same topic.
Same topic, just more than would fit.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, if no others, 11 through 20. I've talked to, ahead of time with counsel, 16 and 23 are pretty much the same, they're identical, so I'm, we're gonna, I'll suggest we strike number 16.
And we need to table I.
And.
Actually, Commissioner, this is Ben Vanoy. If you could strike number 23 and keep number 16, that would be better. Thank you.
Keep 16?
No, strike 23.
Okay.
They must not be identical.
Correct, strike 23.
Hey, go through this thing, it looks.
Well, more or less.
We'll talk about it.
We need to table number 18.
I agree, yes, and we'll table number 18. And the others, 1 through 20. So all those are good, 21 through 30.
If we could continue item number 25 for one week.
Move that, continue that for one week through July 27. Okay. And number 27, I talked to the budget team and like to make the date August 10th, I said August 3rd, give a little bit more time to do some additional research on my part.
I may not be here August 10th.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't continue item number 27 for one week, so I can get a list of what we're looking at, because I don't have that.
It's just setting the date for the.
I know, but if we set that date, because we're opening up the budget, so it'd be nice to see a list of what the proposals are for opening up the budget.
So continue the item itself, then?
Just for one week, so I can get that list.
Okay.
Because there's different ways to open up the budget.
Yeah. Okay, so continue that item for one week to July 27.
Right.
And then we'll decide on a date.
How many days is needed for?
What's, Rudy, what's our window for getting this done in time?
There we go. It wouldn't go. And we have to have a notice five days before the actual meeting. The intention was to have a schedule prepared by the end of this week, so that we will distribute it to the commissioners.
That would work.
Yeah, so we can look at it, because you're absolutely right, there are a couple of different options we need to look at on, you know, and it could impact what we're doing.
Okay.
So we'll continue item number 27 to July 27. Okay. Are there any other items between 21 and 30?
Not for me.
Okay. Then 31 through the remainder, which is 44.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Israel, the community development block grants, grants. I have none. And for closed session items, I understand we need to have a closed session item for 45, 46, and 48.
Yep.
Any, I think, any, no 47s then. Strike that one.
That's my understanding, yes, thank you.
HR. Okay.
And did you say, and striking 47, okay, there we go.
Okay. I think that's it. Alice, would you go through what we have just directed?
Okay, I have us holding agenda item, items number five, six, seven. Tabling 18, striking 23, continuing 25 for one week, which is July 27. Continuing item number 27, one week, which is also July 27. And then, as far as closed meetings, we're gonna hold as stated 45, 46, striking 47, and holding as stated 48.
Okay. Then with that, we are now in our regular agenda. Item number five. And we have, Bert, would you like to address content of this one? Bert?
This one is to discuss and approve or deny tax sale protest filed by Freeman Lovell, ELLC, on behalf of Canyon Advantage.
Right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Sakovic. I apologize, you are moving much faster than I normally am used to, so apparently government is swift today. Bert Harvey with the Clerk Audit's Office, I'm the Administrator of the May Tax Sale. Today before you, we have two protests were filed protesting the sale of two parcels that were sold on May 26 at the tax sale. The first, the first of these protests are dealing with a parcel located in Provo. Sorry, let me get my mouse working here. And I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen through the Zoom call for everyone's benefit. So you can see what I'm, so I can look at the same thing you're looking at. All right. Okay. Yeah, great, thank you. Okay. Parcel in question, I was, and I apologize, I was slow getting it because I was trying to make sure I had this information in front of me, so you can see that. The first parcel in question is, a parcel was sold in Provo. The ownership of record is, the parcel's owned by Jerry Lynn Taylor. This is a, the piece that's right here that's highlighted in red was the parcel was sold at the sale. It was sold to the highest bidder, so this would be a feasible transfer of ownership to the winning buyers, which, who was by the name of Adams, if I am correct, if I remember correctly. Let me just pull that up, so you have the bid. Yeah, yeah, the winning bidder, oh, sorry, excuse me, Wendy Fisher, my mistake. The winning bidder is a lady by the, person by the name of Wendy Fisher out of Arizona. The at issue here is, is a little bit, a little bit more complex. This will probably require the Recorder's Office after the protester have a chance, protesters have a chance to state to the commission as to why they'd like, why they'd like the sale returned. Paul was reminding that I probably should look to the room and see who's here in attendance for this, if anyone.
Would you raise your hand for this to, thank you, sir.
Okay. So obviously we have some people in attendance. I don't know if we've also got some folks online, Alice would probably be able to know that, if they're online, if they would raise their hands online as well. Just to give you the basic facts of this, of this sale, this was, this is a parcel in which, like I said, we sold at the sale. The requirement of, the requirements of the county is to establish who to notify when the sale's coming up and make an attempt, and make that attempt. The statute does not necessarily mean that we have to be successful in attempt, but we have to notify all recorded interests. Now, that gets a little, that, in this case, can be a little bit of a challenge, because we, we make an attempt to record, to notify legitimate recorded interests. In this case, there are some recorded interests that have no effect on the ownership of the parcel. So essentially, for this parcel, we notified the owner of record, which was listed as Jerry Taylor. Jerry Taylor has passed away, and his wife is still alive, but, but she was not listed on the parcel. That may be important as part of deciding whether not to overturn the sale or not. But we sent a notice to Jerry Taylor at his address in, on Nevada Avenue in Provo. As you can see, this is the certified copy, and we received a signed postcard returned from that address, meaning that we successfully delivered that notification. My research of parcel didn't turn up any additional lien holders or other, or other recorded interests that were effective to the parcel, that were, would be effective to either the ownership or lien on the property. There are additional, let me pull this up, this shows the abstract, so this shows that there was a boundary line, two boundary line agreements recorded in the earlier part of this year and a warranty deed, but the warranty deed does not, we run into this all the time where there's overlaps and a warranty deed recorded, it doesn't really affect the ownership of the property, nor would the person who recorded the deed be, you know, in any way harmed by the sale. Typically, we do send out what's known as a courtesy neighborhood notice, but I don't do that when the parcel in question is, is owned by an abutting property owner. For example, if, if like, for example, the backyard of a, the back 20 feet of a backyard is on the tax sale, I'm gonna notify the, the, the front owner, I'm not gonna notify their neighbors and, you know, attempt to collect the debt, I'm not, that's not, that's not our purpose here. So, in the research of, of doing, in doing the research and determining what notices to send out, because of boundary line agreements and the warranty deed really didn't affect or were really effective, at least according to county records on our part, we did not attempt to make notice to, based on those notifications. So, in this case, I sent out a notice to the Taylors, and that's, that's where we stopped. The parcel was then sold at the tax sale to the Fishers. The boundary line agreements, I believe, are what, are what, are, what are at issue in this case, that, anyways, and I'll, and I'll, I'll let the protester cover that. But as far as what, the process we follow, what we did, that is what we completed on this parcel. Do you have any questions? I'm not sure if that was completely clear.
On the, on the notification, the certified letter that went down?
Yeah.
Who signed for it?
As you can see, the, there's a signature there. I don't know if that is Mrs. Taylor or if that was someone else. There, one problem we've been running into with the certified, with the certified notice for the last couple of years due to COVID, postal carriers will sometimes not deliver the letter directly or have the letter signed by, by the intended recipient, and they will, they will sign it, basically certifying that they delivered the letter. So, that doesn't necessarily look like in this case, that could be Mrs. Taylor's signature, but as you can tell, it looks like several squiggly lines in my case, so.
So we just, we don't know on that one?
I can't guarantee, all.
We know it went to that address, and somebody.
It was mailed that address, it was signed for.
Signed for it.
Yeah.
Or, or possibly the mailman signed that he had delivered it at that address.
Yeah.
Second, second question is usually with parcels, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, it seems like we had, there was some hierarchy when it came to parcels that were behind other houses, where there was only a few that might have interest in it, and we give them a preference status. And so, why was, was there a preference status allocated to any of the, the parcels around?
Not in this case, again, because the ownership, if, the ownership of this parcel is a matching ownership of Jerry, granted Jerry Lynn and Mary Taylor on this case, but having not, having not, not being familiar with the parcel, I would not know whether this parcel is being used by the Taylors. There would be no reason to grant any bidder preference in this case, because the Taylors are the owners of the property, and if they choose not to redeem the taxes, then we would, we would offer it to the highest bidder. There would be no reason to grant a preferred, a preferred interest in this case, because there is no, there is, there is a, an abutting ownership to be, to be considered. So we grant, we grant, we grant preference of ownership when, for example, let's, let's say, let's say that, let's say that that piece is the backyard of someone else, and it's in a different ownership. And the, and the, and the abstract history that we look at basically creates what you could call a clear intention of, of who the owner should be here. That's not really clear in this case. So, where this is, where, again, the Taylors were, were the owners, they're the abutting property owner, really what we're looking for is the Taylors to, to pay the taxes and get that off the sale. If they don't pay the taxes, then we would offer it up to the highest bidder. There wouldn't be any reason to grant a preferred interest in this case, because, again, the Taylors are already the owners.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, I probably went around in circles there, but basically.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no, I'm just looking at the map here.
Okay. All right, I would, I would say, I don't know what proceeding, how the commission would like to proceed from here, if you'd like to hear from the protesters first, or hear from Paul, or from the Recorder's Office, but.
Let's hear from the county first, and then we'll go to the appeal.
Paul Jones with the Attorney's Office, just to follow up on Commissioner Lee's question, the obligation on the county is to send that certified letter. The fact that it was signed for at all is really evidence that it was delivered. Again, we don't have an obligation to locate the actual owner, but just to send that certified notice to the address on record, which we did, and it was signed for. Mr. Harvey would have also sent a first class letter, so not certified, but first class. He could probably tell us that that went out and was not returned, so.
Will we post any notices?
No, nothing, because I had a successful notice.
He received the certification back, so he wouldn't go post?
You didn't write out there.
I don't normally, I don't, unless there's something unique about the property to where I would go out and do a physical posting, in this case, no.
No physical.
Yeah, no physical posting on this one.
One reason why I ask that question is because I know there's bare minimum requirements, but it's often that I know the office, the Auditor's Office, will go over and above to even go knock on doors.
Right.
You know, that are, that are adjacent. And, and for me, anytime that we're looking at selling somebody's property, especially if it's not just vacant, or whatever the case may be, an orphaned piece where somebody actually owns that property, I'm more inclined to think that we should do more, not, not just the minimum. You know, to make sure that we, you know, do all we can for notification purposes. That's the reason why I'm asking on the notification stuff.
I was just following up with the standard that, that we, the required standard that we have.
And Commissioner, if I can, if I can add to that, that's a very, that's a very good point, and you're right, we do, in many cases, make extra efforts. I have to admit that in the, in the, in the rush of the tax sale, because we do have basically 60 days from the point the tax sale becomes our responsibility until the day of the sale, there are times that I am not as complete in my efforts. There are times I look at, I look at something and feel like that we've done our job, that we've done, we've made a, a due diligence effort, and then after the fact, you know, as we've, we've had protests in the past, that you can find out, well, okay, maybe we could have done more, maybe we could have done more here. But at the time, when we did the, when we did the notifications, we felt like that we had done what was required, based off of what was recorded, based off the property circumstances, based off of everything else was going on. So, yes, we do, we do try to make as many efforts to do our due diligence as possible, and if we fall short, it's not for lack of trying.
Of course, this is in addition to the, the annual tax notice that had gone out the previous five years with no response, and this is in addition to posting it in the newspaper and on the website. And so, yes, these, these notices went out, signed for, not, you know, returned mail, not deliverable, we didn't get any of that. That's all I wanted to point out, there is, the discussion on this property is bound to, to, to head in the direction of a document that was submitted for recording that was not, that was rejected by the Recorder's Office. So that'll be a main point. I'll, I'll turn it over to the, to Jason from the Recorder's Office to just describe that situation. Of course, I'm available for any questions.
Hi, Jason Thurlow from the Recorder's Office. So our office looked at the boundary line agreement in question in February and evaluated that it did not meet the Utah State Code requirements to operate, so we could not do that, and we did mail out a notice to the title company in, in February, making them aware of that. Is there any other questions you have about that?
So maybe explain a little bit more the boundary line agreement.
So in the, in the Utah State Code, they refer to certain requirements that needs to be on a boundary line agreement that's recorded for it to fully operate. I can go into all the really specific details of that if you'd like. There's also the, one of the owners did not sign, this parcel that's in question is in the name of a trust, and the boundary line agreement, it did not make mention of that. So that's just the reasons why we could not operate it for taxing purposes.
So, the relevancy with this part, Paul, then, is what?
Okay, so the relevancy is that, so, so there was a boundary line agreement document submitted to the Recorder's Office. Now, that boundary line agreement, if it had been operational, then it would have changed ownership on part of this parcel to a different property owner. Bert, Mr. Harvey did not send notice to that property owner, give notice of the tax sale, because the document wasn't effective.
Got it.
So, you could see here on your screen, in red is the parcel that was sold. Let's just say the, the southern half of that, just to be, just for, just a quick reference, would have been captured in this boundary line agreement, and it would have transferred ownership of the bottom half to the property owner in that kind of, just, just west, right there, of the, of the property on that southern part, so. So there was a document filed with the Recorder's Office that, that would have transferred ownership, but it didn't meet the requirements of the statute, and so there was actually no recorded ownership interest, because ownership didn't change hands. And the Recorder's Office notified the title company that their document was ineffective, and, and so they didn't actually change the map, they haven't changed ownership, and so I imagine gentlemen here with us will probably want to talk more about that, but.
Did the title company give a response after they were notified?
No, not the.
Any additional information from them? Okay.
No. So the protest was filed by the people that own this, this southern, Bert, I don't know what you're doing with the map there, but.
That's the description.
I'm trying to show the.
Okay, yeah, okay, good point. So, if this, if this boundary line agreement would have been worked, it would have changed, so this parcel in blue, I guess you'd say? Would have gone to the property owner that's in the south, in the southern part. It has since changed hands, right, to a new property owner. Yeah, yeah, so. The protest, I think, is basically based on the fact that we did not provide notice to the individual that would have benefited from the boundary line agreement that was not worked.
So maybe some other questions, then, if this, this Taylor property to my right, probably your right as well?
Yeah.
If that's, if that seems to be the entire property, I mean, it wraps around, and that was not on, on tax sale, just that, just that one parcel?
Yeah, so I can give you a little more background, and maybe I'm the least qualified to, to, to make these statements, but the parcel in red, along with the parcel to the right, used to be part of the same parcel. And then, the, the Taylors, they recorded a new plat, and they put it in the name of Jerry and Mary Taylor. And when they did that, they left off this part in red. And so it's sort of like a child parcel, or it was the part that was, anyway, the part in red was sort of left off, and it's still in just Jerry's name.
Correct.
Is my understanding.
As a trustee, yep.
As a trustee. And so, that's how they were related at one point, was, they were all one parcel, and then when they recorded the new plat, they, they left off this portion in red.
I'd also like to point out that up until 2016, the taxes were being paid by, by Jerry and, and Mary Taylor. So, I verified that through the Treasurer's Office. So, the people, the, the prior owners, now, not the current owners of the parcel and, next to the parcel in question, were not paying the taxes, it was actually the Taylors paying the taxes on this. So, in terms of looking at who's the ownership, who the, who the notice should go to, I was not taking the, the boundary line agreements or the warranty deed that was recorded into account, because they weren't the owner of the parcel. they weren't the owner of the parcel, they hadn't been paying the taxes. The historical, the history of the parcel showed it all pointed to Taylor, so I sent notices to Taylor, so. And I'd like to also point out that the boundary line agreements and the warranty deed were recorded as a part of a, obviously, a real estate transaction was done in the early part of the year, and I think the question that was on our minds is, we dealt with this after the sale, finding and discussing this with the people, with the parties involved, was why weren't the taxes then taken care of? If the intention was the owner in the front to buy, to buy that, why weren't the taxes cleared by the title company? Maybe that was an oversight, maybe they were still waiting to get something done with the Taylors, maybe there's some question about who paid the taxes, we don't know. But we wouldn't be here if the taxes had been actually taken care of as part of that earlier transaction, if the intent was to take ownership of this property. So those are some factors.
So when they, when they applied for a boundary line agreement and it was rejected, we sent that rejection to the title company?
Correct.
Did we send it to the property owner?
We did not. The title company recorded that boundary line agreement, so that's the address we mailed that notice to.
So when we were unable to process the boundary line agreement, we just told the title company?
Yeah, these are courtesy notices that we mail out if we see these potential issues that don't transfer, and we try to just contact, you know, whoever recorded the document. Sometimes it's the individual, sometimes it's the title company.
So the title company, we don't know if the title company communicated with?
Yeah, we, I mean, no, I mean, obviously, it wasn't corrected and.
And it sounded like they didn't respond back to us either.
Yeah.
So the owner could be left wondering.
The owner would have had no clue if the title company didn't tell them.
Yeah. Do you know what was the total on that five years for the taxes?
I can, let me pull that up for you in just a minute.
Because I saw that it was sold for $33,000.
That's correct.
I was just wondering if that was the full tax amount.
Yeah, let me pull up the ratification list that we did last week, and I can answer that question for you.
And that was like $2,000?
Let's see, oh, no, 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 we didn't ratify this parcel because it was being protested, so that doesn't help us. I gotta get the other list up here.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would equal $33,000, but.
Okay, the opening bid for this parcel was $272.41, and it sold for $33,000, the $35,000 is the bid total, is the bid amount plus the buyer's premium. So it actually sold for a total of $33,027.59.
Okay, but what were the fees owed?
The original tax, penalty and interest owed was $272.41, that was the opening bid.
So what are the structures, the structures on the property?
You know, I'm not sure. I only, I haven't been at the property myself, but I believe there's a structure on it, but I can only tell from basically Google Earth and the.
Do we have a Google Earth photo?
Yeah, this is not a property I went and did a physical posting on.
Do we have a Google Earth photo?
The county parcel map is a recent photograph.
Yeah, so there is a structure there and a structure there.
Yeah, it looks like there's a garage that's fully enveloped, or some sort of building right there.
Okay, okay. What about the top half? You say the bottom half is where the boundary line agreement was, there was a question on? What about the top half of that red area?
As I look at the boundary line agreement, it has, it has a picture in there that shows that the intent, it looks like, was to kind of square off that and follow the, follow the property boundary lines with, for the now Canyon Advantage parcel, and kind of square off, basically cut in half Jerry Lynn Taylor's, the Jerry Lynn Taylor parcel.
So we'd have like a jagged piece?
Yeah, we still have, we still have like this squared piece, like this top half that I don't believe would have been, would have been covered in the boundary line agreement and moved that to Weston King. Weston King, if I can go back to, if I go back to the abstract here for this one, both Weston King and Jerry Lynn and Mary Taylor signed boundary line agreements with Lucas Weisman, who was the prior owner, who sold that to Canyon Advantage, and.
So the other part of it was part of a boundary line agreement as well?
Possibly. Let me pull that up.
And if so, was that recorded, or was it rejected, or was it even attempted?
I don't know, that would be a question for the Recorder's Office.
No, the top part in question was not a part of this boundary line agreement, and I don't believe another boundary line agreement that we know of yet for that.
When, during the previous boundary line agreement, what would have happened with that piece?
It would have kept as a remainder, left in the name of the trust until something else was done with that.
Okay, so it, even if the boundary line agreement had been recorded, then that portion would have still been, in theory, up for tax sale, because we would have had to split that parcel?
Jason, would these two, these two boundary line agreements, they were, they were trying to do the same thing, just square off?
Yes, with two individuals, yeah. It was with, one was with the King, and then another was with the Taylors, yeah.
So that's, so this is a, if I can rotate this, where's it, where's rotate? There we go.
Yeah, so it would have been that shape there is what they were trying to acquire.
So the, okay, so that's what they were trying to acquire, but then I see like pencil above it, it looks like they were trying to make that, both parcels like that. Like this was the agreement here, but even in the drawing, the upper portion, because there's a second structure there, like it looks like a second garage on the aerial view.
And I'm not sure what the drawing was trying to show there. I'm not sure.
On a functionality basis, this one home with the canyon view, it looks pretty obvious that that's being used as a garage with, going all the way back to it.
Right, and then see the top portion kind of cuts through a second garage there?
Right, yeah.
That's why I'm trying to determine what would have happened with that and a boundary line agreement there.
Yeah, it would have been a leftover piece. I don't recall any documents recorded that was trying to do anything with that that we're addressing today.
Okay, so, may I, any other comments on this?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we've got the protester.
Go ahead, please have the representative come up, please. Identify yourself when you do.
Hi, my name is Bradley Tilt, I am the attorney for Canyon Advantage, the current owner of the tax sold parcel at issue here. I'd ask, Bert, would you throw back up that slide that shows the overview of it? Not with, not the Google Earth, just the regular one. And if I could ask the council members to turn to Exhibit 2 in the materials that I filed? No, the first one with just the yellow background.
Okay.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'll respectfully submit that the Taylors didn't pay that $272.49 in taxes on the tax parcel that's at issue here, because they didn't own it, and they never did. The issue and the genesis of the problem comes from what is shown on Exhibit 2 in the materials that I filed there. The county mappers have somehow gotten the description of the Canyon Advantage parcel such that it bisects the house that is on that parcel, it cuts it off from the garage, and Commissioner Lee, you're correct, that that is the garage for the Canyon Advantage property. And it actually has, as Exhibit 2 shows, the property shifted to the west and the south, so that it ends up with a big chunk of it in the road. In fact, you can see on this screen, picture that's on the screen there, neighboring parcels are shown as in the road.
Right, and not covering the house or the garage.
What happened is the two boundary line agreements that were entered into squared back up the shape and the footprint of what is now the Canyon Advantage property, and essentially just shifted it back into where it was supposed to be. The actual specifics of the legal description are somewhat different than the historical deeds, but that's only to make it work based on the current monumentation and so forth that is recognized by the counties, and it's plugged into this map that's on screen there. The area, the footprint, everything else of the legal description is exactly the same as it always ever has been. And with regard to that, I do have several historical Google Earth images that I can share if I can approach.
Please do.
I'll take both of them.
Well, I just gave you my last one there, dude. So if you line this up so that you see the 900 East Street that's shown on screen there is running top to bottom on all of these photos there, and the 947 South 900 East address of the subject property has a pin on it showing where it is. And you can see as you flip through these over time, and the dates on them from the historical Google Earth imagery is shown in the top left-hand corner. You've got a 1993, a 1997, and several from the early 2000s I stapled over it, so I can't see it, but as the images get newer and newer, and the visuals get clearer and clearer, you can very clearly see by the time of 2006 that it's the driveway for the 947 South 900 East property that runs back to that garage, that the tax parcel, tax sold parcel carved off from the parcel that's at issue here. So the issues of the, with regard to the tax sale are, they're actually primarily threefold. First of all, there's actually no gap parcel there at all, there's no valid tax parcel there at all, because the Taylor property, the neighboring development property there, never did own that parcel, that's why it wasn't taxed. The Taylor parcel, when it was surveyed and mapped and so forth, and set out as is depicted on the screen there, used the newer and monumentation that corresponds to the mapping that system that the county has been using, that resulted in many of these parcels being out in the street. But my client's parcel historically was tied to different monumentation that shifted. And I do have the surveyor here who is happy to speak to these issues as to the necessity for the boundary line agreement, why it was needed, and what it fixed and what it did. Suffice it to say, the boundary line agreement, again, was only to fix the location of the parcel at issue here, so that it was no longer in the street, so that its northern boundary line did, no longer bisected the home, and it shifted it also to the east to put it right back in the pocket where it always had been until some sort of a mapping error occurred at the county level. So there never was any gap parcel there at all, the red highlighted parcel actually doesn't exist. It is part of my client's parcel, and the immediately neighboring parcel that you can see also has its home and garage bisected by the lines that are recognized by the county. This gap parcel, once you put those two parcels back into where they're supposed to be, doesn't exist. There wasn't ever any non-payment of tax on it. The owner of the property that's now owned by my client paid its taxes, the owner of the Taylor property paid its taxes, and how this parcel, that's completely landlocked, came into being is due to a mapping error. And so there really is no gap parcel, no tax parcel where there wasn't any tax paid. So that's the first reason why the tax sale ought to be not recognized or set aside. The second reason is related to that, which is the boundary agreements, they exist, they were created with the assistance and of a professional surveyor, who again is happy to talk about that if needs be for the commission. And the state statute says that a document is entitled to be recorded, and that's a quote, "is entitled to be recorded" under 57-3105 subsections 2 and 3, if it has a legal description on it, the names of the parties to it, and a mailing address to be used for tax assessment purposes. All of that required information is included on both of the boundary line agreements that are at issue here. They are therefore, by statute, entitled to be recorded. They in fact were recorded, they are Exhibits 3 and 4 in the materials that I have provided. Once those documents were recorded, and then immediately after them, the warranty deed to Canyon Advantage of the parcel that I'm here for today, also as a matter of statutory law under Utah Code 57-3102-sub-1, once a document is recorded, it shall, it quote "shall," from the time of recording, with the appropriate county recorder, impart notice to all persons of their contents, end quote. That includes notice to Utah County of their contents. We've heard several cryptic comments today from the county to the effect that the boundary agreement didn't work or was invalid, we have not heard a single reason as to why that is. I submit there is none. Statutorily, it's entitled to be recorded, as a matter of law, it shall provide notice to all those, all persons, including the county, four months before the tax sale. The boundary line agreements and the warranty deed were recorded in January of '22, the tax sale was in May of '22. That leads to the third argument as to why this tax sale is void and invalid, because regardless of everything else that I've said today, even if none of that was an issue, there was no due process notice. Mr. Jones represented that a moment ago that the tax sale notice was published in the newspaper and online, it was not. That is Exhibit 7 in the materials that I have provided to the commission. Every single search that I could run on the statutorily required website for publication of tax sales, whether it be just by the address or by the tax ID number of this parcel at issue, or whether it be by even just searching "tax sale," nothing came up related to this property. In fact, no tax sale in Utah County, period, came up with, so as a matter of statutory law, under Utah Code 59-2-135, I think it's sub 2, I'm sorry, the county quote "shall provide notice of the tax sale by certified mail and first-class mail to the owner." The argument is that the Taylors are the owners, I submit that's not the case, but I also submit that there's no question the county saw and was aware of the boundary line agreement and the warranty deed recorded immediately on the heels of those two boundary line agreements. They should have sent notice to the party on there, Canyon Advantage, its address for tax purposes was noticed right on its warranty deed, they should have been provided notice, even if the county took the position that somebody else was the owner of it. They were on record notice of the existence of the document, the document says what it says, it's not for the county to determine ownership, it's for the county to provide notice. I submit there was a notice failure at the mailing level, but Utah Code further says that the county shall provide notice by publication four times in a newspaper and by publication online in a certain statutorily designated notice website. Again, Exhibit 7 shows that notice never happened, so there is still a due process failure, even if notice to the Taylors was sufficient mailing notice to the owner. I do have two Canyon Advantage representatives that are present by Zoom that can testify to the fact that Canyon Advantage was not notified with regard to this tax sale at all until they got the notice of hearing a week ago. But it sounds to me like the county acknowledges that there was no mailing made to Canyon Advantage, so I don't know that that's necessary, but they are here, if the commission would like to hear from them. So we have the fact that there really is no tax parcel at all, there's no missed tax payments, those were all paid by virtue, there's no gap there, and so all the taxes were paid.
I wonder if I could, could I, could I go through just a question I have, which I think might, might be relevant, it might not. Bert, can you pull up the Canyon Views parcel that we have listed, and tell me what they have paid in the past for their taxes, and according to what the acreages, and see if we can match that up with what, with which map? Is it, is it, is it the one with the gap in it, or is it, or are they paying taxes on a larger parcel?
I'm not sure, hang on, let me try this.
Yeah, and I would go further to say, who built the garage, who gave a permit for the garage, did they pull a permit for the garage? If they pulled a permit for the. Did they pull a permit for the garage? If they pulled a permit for the garage and the garage was permitted and built, and it was built on property, you know what I mean? We go further to those.
And I do agree with that that is relevant. I will, uh, direct your attention though to the first of the Google Earth images that I provided today.
Yeah, it shows the garage is there nineteen ninety-three. Yeah.
And therefore, by virtue of the doctrine of boundary by acquiescence that applies in Utah, uh, when you flip to the two thousand six photos, you can see very clearly that that garage is fenced in to the Canyon Advantage par- parcel, as well as a, uh, a fence, uh, and clear demarcation line being there on the south of the parcel. So it, that parcel, as a matter of law, is owned by my client and its predecessors under the boundary by acquiescence doctrine. Even if any of these boundary line agreements failed, even if any of the taxes, uh, or warranty deeds failed, even if the mapping error hadn't occurred, as a matter of law, that property, uh, was not owned by Taylors. It was owned by, uh, Canyon Advantage and its predecessors. Uh, so again, notice to the Taylors is insufficient notice in this particular case.
The reason why I bring it up as, as Bert goes through with it is, is because part of our responsibility is to collect, collect the tax. And so my question is, is who's paying the tax or who paid the tax? And, and if your client's been paying the tax all along-
On an acreage the size of-
On an acreage that's that size, then it's, it seems pretty easy. But if, if your client's been paying on acreage less than that, then, you know, who's been paying or who has not been paying on that tax i- is, you know, kind of in question. And I think that, that kind of goes back around on, you know, then, uh, you know, how, how that happened? Or did it happen in the past? Um, where did it get changed? How the boundaries move?
Regardless of that point, I mean, my take is that we overturn, regardless of who needs to pay that two hundred and seventy-one dollars, if it even needs to be paid at all. I mean, if they're paying on the correct acreage, we may just abate that and get rid of that piece and let's fix it on the map. Regardless, I think the tax sale needs to be overturned. I think what I see here is just a perpetual problem of, I mean, our recorder's office was underfunded for a decade and we just had to add seventeen employees. They didn't have the bandwidth nor the budget to send out, uh, tax notices to additional people. Bert is currently supervising seventeen people. He doesn't actually have time to drive out and post physical notice on every property. Should he? Should we, in the spirit of things, absolutely a hundred percent, a hundred percent support that. But when you perpetually underfund departments for a decade, mistakes happen and we need to fix the mistakes. So, I lean, my personal preference would lean towards saying as a county, legally, did we meet our minimum standards? Yes. Morally, did we meet our minimum standards? I'm gonna say no. The reason why is not because of any of our employees underperforming. They all doing a phenomenal job, but we've given them perpetual too little resources to go above and beyond. And I think that that's for us as a commission to correct. So my inclination is to overturn the tax sale and then determine whether or not the correct fees were paid. If they weren't paid, your client can pay the two hundred and seventy-one dollars. If they were paid, then we need to abate that. Regardless, the property boundaries need to be fixed. That's my, that's where I am right now.
Commissioner, your question.
Commence me otherwise.
The parcel, the, the Weisman parcel, uh, they've been paying taxes on point, uh, thirteen, point one three acreage. Um, you know, that's, that's a very good question. I, I don't know necessarily how to, how to really rectify that. That's probably a better treasurer question or recorder question. What I can tell you is on the parcel that was sold in the sale, when I looked at the payment history for the taxes that were paid on that, and yes, it's, it's very little taxes, obviously. You know, talking five years and we're still only in the two hundred dollar level. Those taxes up until twenty sixteen, which is when the first year of delinquency occurred, were being paid by the Taylors. So, the Taylors were receiving a tax notice and they were paying taxes on that, on that amount. I, I don't know why this situation happened. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Gardner that this goes back to, you know, boundary line issues that existed, that have existed for a long time. This is a part, parts of Provo, there's weird stuff like this. We deal with this all the time. We have to do, we kind of, you know, make the best decisions we can, but-
Yes, the question is physically, so they've been paying on point one three acres.
They've been paying on point one three acres.
They're the top one.
No, that's, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the Weisman, the one that's now owned by Canyon Advantage. That's, that's what I was looking-
Canyon Advantage. So, do we know physically how much, like, if we were to measure that on the ground, do we know what the acreage of that is?
Point one three.
I was looking for it on the deed. It doesn't say it on the deed. Um, is it in the boundary agreement? All right, exhibits two and, uh, excuse me, three and four.
The, the gap parcel in question is, is a ten, is point one of an acre, tenth of an acre.
Yep, point one eight acres is the historical size of the-
Okay, so they've been paying on point one three and the historical size is point one eight, so there is a gap that needs to be made up there.
I think that's an addition. Is that an addition?
Oh.
You see what I mean? They've been paying on point one three, but their actual acreage on the recorded boundary agreement, or on the boundary agreement would be point one eight. So Canyon Advantage has been underpaying on taxes. So we just need to make up that gap, that difference.
And I appreciate that, happy to do that. One point of clarification, it's not Canyon Advantage that didn't pay. They bought it in January of twenty-two.
Right, but the, the, the physical parcel that they own is point one eight. They've been paying on point one three. There is a gap. We just need to make up that gap.
I understand what you're saying. Uh, but that gap again goes to-
A misrecording because we're, we were paying, we were sending a bill for point one three because that's what we had recorded, but it needs to be point one eight.
All right. Um, anything further or?
Do we know, do we know how long this, 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 these boundaries have been in place? I know Paul wants to say something, but-
I have not done a, a search on that. I don't know.
Come on up here.
That's, that's David Hawkes. He's the surveyor who did the, uh, boundary line agreement. The servants for the boundary line agreement.
My name is David Hawkes. I'm a professional land surveyor. And I, I, I didn't prepare the boundary agreement. One of my associates did. I, I own Boundary Consultants, Consultants, who is the company that prepared the descriptions. The problem here is that the Taylors owned a piece of property that had an ancient description along with the Weisermans and what is now the Canyon Advantage parcel. They all had ancient descriptions. In Utah County, back in nineteen, in the nineteen fifties, early sixties, there was a county surveyor here that went out and did a, what they called a dependent re-survey and put all these wonderful new monuments in. And he ignored extrinsic evidence of where those monuments should be. So there's a lot of monuments in Utah County that are about fifty feet or more off of where they should be. So if you take an ancient deed and you put it in against a new, uh, the new monumentation, there's gonna be a shift. It's gonna leave gaps and overlaps. The things with the Taylors is the Taylor took their property and they had it surveyed, then they had it turned into a subdivision. When that subdivision was made, it left a portion that was in the ancient deed that didn't, that they never owned, that shifted back to where the, the monuments are today. So this is a historic thing that's been going on for a substantial amount of time. And Utah County's got a real problem with this.
Yeah, no, I, you know, my mom bought her property in nineteen eighty-nine. The original property was surveyed in nineteen fifty-three. I remember when I was in high school. My mom's legally blind, so I read a lot with her as a high school student, and we went through the same thing. My mom had four feet of her property that was between her house and the neighbor's house that looked up. It came up on tax sale. It cut her garage in half. I mean, it's like, I literally went through this as a teenager twenty-five years ago.
These honestly are parcels that shouldn't be identified. They shouldn't be turned into a parcel. They shouldn't be sold. There ought to be a surveyor that looks at it. There's a reason, there's a reason that I have a license. And, and there were, I took a lot of tests and a lot of education to get my license. And that, that wasn't to take a, a map or to take a description that's written and put it on the ground. That's not their responsibility. That's a surveyor's responsibility. And you have a county surveyor. And before anything like this happens, before you impact somebody's property rights, and I, I'm not here to lecture to you. But before you impact somebody's ownership and property rights and start coloring title, you probably ought to have your county surveyor look at these tax sales. There's other counties that do.
That's a fair point.
For, for every one of these gaps, there's an overlap. So i- if you think you're losing, losing out on some money from, from a tax sale, you're actually not. You're just, you're, you're double taxing over an overlap on a deed. And, and it's a real problem down here.
For sure.
So, so you're, so these maps then, from what you're saying, they could have been this, this way since the nineteen fifties?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you don't see this, the, this isn't a, this isn't a problem you used to see. This problem surfaced when the county recorder got access to AutoCAD and they started drawing all the deeds and holding the deeds as what, what a boundary is. A deed is nothing more than a part of the evidence of what a boundary is. So what I do is I take a deed and I go out on the ground and I compare that deed to what, what the fences and occupation are. And that's how I make my decision where a boundary is. It's by, what are the actions of the parties around it? If there's a fence there, and in this case, there's been a fence there for over a hundred years. And now all of a sudden the fence doesn't matter and I'm gonna sell your property?
Right.
Yeah, got that.
And that's, and that's my point. My, my point, and I'm glad you came up and clarified that. Because, you know, when we point to, oh, this is a funding issue, this has been going on since nineteen fifty or longer. And so this is an issue, it's a systemic issue that we have in, in the way of, with maps, with surveyor, it's bigger, it's bigger than that. If, if it was a funding issue, then we've been underfunding since nineteen fifty. And so there's, there's, there's a problem with, you know, trying to point in that direction.
Absolutely it is.
Well, and we also used to go and put a physical notice on every tax sale, and we don't now because we don't have time to. So that, that's one way we used to get around a lot of this is we used to go and put a physical notice on every tax sale. We would notice, hey, that's actually the garage of this house. Maybe we should knock on that door and solve a lot of those problems before we were to the point that we were rejecting a sale.
You know, you've got Google Earth. And, and Google Earth can do the same thing. It's just somebody ignored, hey, there's fences here. We're, we're not gonna look at them. We're just gonna look at who paid taxes on what. There, there's a garage that's been here for how many years, but the Taylors on it when it's been used and occupied by somebody else? There's just so much evidence that they didn't own that.
Well said. Appreciate that. Excellent insight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Any further comments or needless comments or maybe a question?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the protest.
Can I interrupt you, Commissioner? I think there was somebody online.
Out of order. I'll second that and then I think-
Oh, okay. I want to make sure everybody had a chance to-
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see anybody. Are there any? Good. Okay, no other comments then.
Do you have a comment now? Or you no comment? Okay.
Right. Yeah, I think we should reverse the tax sale.
Okay, so we have a motion.
In a second.
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we approve number five, three to zero. Thank you very much, counsel. Appreciate your insights.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's still work to do. We've got to adjust the description. We have to, you know, there's more to do. If, if it says, if, if he's been paying on point one three and the description's point one eight, let's figure that, but the tax sale is reversed.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if I, I probably have provided my info to Bert, but I definitely will, and, and we're happy to coordinate with the county on that. We don't, we're not looking to skip any taxes, but-
For sure.
What are next steps then? I presume no tax deed is going to be issued. What happens is-
We'll work with, uh, Mr. Jones there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much. Okay, we are on number, item number six now to discuss and approve or deny a tax sale protest filed by the Marlin Bates attorney on behalf of Security Service Federal Credit Union related to parcel serial number last four zero zero four five.
Correct. Well, this one also is, comes down to lack of notice, uh, and to really cut it short, uh, truthfully, this one is, this one is, could be overturned for lack of notice. Now, I'll give you, I'll give you what we did here, uh-
If you agree with that, maybe I can make a motion.
Well, I mean, if, if you want to. But let me, but there, but this is, this is one of those, this is one of those, but let, but let me tell you what's going on, kind of thing. Okay, so this is a very unique, this, this, this parcel happened to be a very unique situation. Uh, this parcel has been on tax sale, uh, this is its third time on sale. So when it came to, uh, making sure that we've, oh, excuse me, sorry, apologize for my, we need to also ask if anyone's here in the room that would like to speak to this, so that way the-
Thank you for the reminder. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this? Please raise your hand.
Either here in the room or online.
Or online, yes.
Number six on the agenda.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
This is the, uh, this is a protest for the sale of, the, the owner record is Patricia and Robert Collins.
Okay.
Patricia and Robert Collins found me here, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Is there anyone here on Zoom, Alice? One person?
Okay. And I believe, I believe someone from, uh, Mr. Bates' office is here. Mr. Bates, I believe, was unavailable. Uh, he, he asked, he actually contacted me yesterday, uh, wondering if they could have this continued. I said, due to the short timeframe, we couldn't, so, but, uh, they may, they may want to continue this to the next week. So Mr. Bates himself can be here, uh, in present, but I'll give the, I'll give the commission a quick rundown. So this parcel was actually, uh, this parcel was actually on the sale for the third time. I did much more, uh, because it's a home, uh, I do take greater, I do take greater strides to, uh, to notify, uh, the parcel owner. In this case, I sent out a first-class and certified notice and did not receive back a certification. And because it was on the sale a third time, because I hadn't heard from the owner, I did take the extra step of actually going out and posting a physical notice, which I did. Uh, I knocked the door, didn't get an answer, posted notice, went to get my camera, take a picture of it, and the notice had been taken off the door. No one approached me. I didn't approach anyone, but the notice was made. Um, I also, there's also, um, a recorded lien on the property from Security Service Federal Credit Union. The history on that lien, just to be clear, was actually, the lien was taken out, uh, by Mr. and Mrs. Collins back in two thousand five. Yeah, two thousand five. Uh, one Security Service, uh, by, uh, through Family First Federal Credit Union. Um, off the top of my head right now, I don't know if Family First either failed or was just simply bought out by Security Service, but Security Service took over Family First, uh, business and assets, which included the, uh, the loan by Mr. and Mrs. Collins. Uh, and, uh, in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-one, in, uh, in May, uh, they recorded a transfer of trustee to, uh, Scaly Reading Bates Hansen Erasmussen, which whom Mr. Bates is, uh, the attorney for, uh, and then recorded a notice of default. Now, there was no recording of the cancellation of notice of default, which usually means that I don't need to send a notice to. But in this case, I, I did fail to send a notice to, uh, Scaly Reading and Bates, uh, because they did have an active notice of default. Uh, I do see this, uh, on parcel of the time that are on the tax sale where there's a notice of default, say a foreclosure proceeding has started, but then things are worked out and, and that notice is, is canceled. Typically, when there's an active notice, uh, I do send out, I do send out a notification. I simply missed it in this case with the, with the law for, Security Service was notified. I did send a notice to, to the lien holder themselves. Uh, so in that case, half notice was done. You know, one party was noticed, but not the other. But what's unique about this, about this particular sale is that because it's an occupied home, we actually, uh, by, uh, our typical process, do not sell the property to the highest bidder. We do what's known as an undivided interest. This year, of course, we did the entire sale online. So because we weren't able to do our standard, uh, bidding process with, with undivided interest, what we did is we opened the bid, uh, we opened the bidding for a three percent, a flat three percent ownership in the property, which was the value of the taxes against the assessed value of the property, and basically allowed it to be bid up from there. Well, this property was very popular and was, uh, the final bid was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which of course takes care of the taxes that were owed on it, which was about, um, about twenty thousand, about twenty-five thousand dollars in back taxes, which were owed on the property. Uh, and, um, possibly could take care of also the outstanding lien on the property too as well. Uh, the buyer, uh, bought an ownership, uh, of three percent of the property, which there, under Utah State law, that ownership is guaranteed, uh, to either the, uh, if the property was sold or the, or, uh, if the property was sold, they would be guaranteed their pro rata share, which is that three percent, or the greater of what they paid plus twelve percent interest. That is, that is actually written into Utah State law. So essentially, the buyer now has, uh, a vested ownership interest of three percent and basically a lien on the property of the amount that they paid for in the sale, plus the buyer's premium, which actually comes out to be about a hundred and, oh, I think I had this on my, on my sheet. Let me give you the exact number. Which actually comes out to be about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, nine oh eight. So plus the, the guaranteed twelve percent by the state, uh, there is now effectively a lien on the property, uh, that would have to be cleared if the property would be sold, of about a hundred, uh, about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. What happens though from the sale is after, is af- is one of properties sold for more than taxes owed, that money is then due back to the original owners. Uh, so that hundred and sixty thousand taxes were paid off that, that leaves four, that leaves a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of, of overage that is now due back to the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Collins or anyone that would, or anyone would have a, a claim on the property, including Security Service Federal Credit Union. Um, my, just for full, just for full transparency, I had a conversation with Mr. Bates earlier on before they decided to file the protest, and I asked him what the, what- on before they decided to file the protest, and I asked him what the, what the lien was, and he indicated it was somewhere between 40, 50,000 dollars. So, the purpose, obviously, of notifying a, a recorded interest is because we are doing harm potentially through the sale by removal of property. In this case, no, we didn't note, we didn't notify the, the trustee of the property, but the harm here is being negated, can be, if you want, if you want to look at it this way, can be negated by the fact that the sale of the property creates an amount that can be claimed by both the owner and the, and lien holder, make the lien holder whole on the property. And we haven't completely removed their interest because we've only sold off a 3% ownership. Now, that 3% ownership effectively would be clear of that lien, but there's still another 97% in which that lien is, is stayed safe on, on the property. So, in terms of everything else that's going on with this property, I wanted to give you the full, the full story. If, if the commission feels it's in the best interest to avoid the sale, there is clear standing to do that. Yes, there was a notice I missed that is, that is, that is on, that is an onus on our part. We missed that notice. We got the other ones, we missed that one. But there are other circumstances, and I would be interested to know what the parties want, want to be done in this case, because there, I have heard from parties in different, different, different things they'd like to see done. So, with that, I, I believe, you have, does the commission have any questions for me?
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you explained that, because I didn't think it was going to go that route, but there's opportunity, possibly, for the owners, depending on what they wanted, what they would like to do, from my perspective, anyway. There's an opportunity, as I'm looking at it, to pay the tax, pay off the lien, and, and still own 97% of the, of the property.
That's correct.
Going forward, or possibly even to have, have this, this, this protest agreed to, and then it kind of starts the process all over again. It would still be owed in the way of the tax, the lien is still in place, and then it gets sold again next year if it's not cured.
Right.
And so, I, I think that's, it's fascinating. I am too also interested in what the, the property owners would like to do.
Do we need anything from counsel on this at this point? We do have the attorneys for this, this topic, and she would like to speak to this on Zoom.
Which attorneys?
This is Bates, Hansen, and Erasmussen.
Yeah, this is Scaly Reesey, Scaly, Scaly Reading. I, I'd just like to say, I, I just want to make sure that, that were heard here. Our, the basis of our protest is that we had started foreclosure in 2021. Notice of default was recorded, substitution of trustee, everything was up record. We placed the foreclosure on hold due to some loss mitigation. The owner of the property was really hard to get ahold of, but the client had finally gotten ahold of them, entered into an agreement, and that essentially placed the file on hold. And so, we, we didn't take any action from that point, and then we weren't notice of the tax sale. And because of that, the tax sale went ahead, and we didn't really know about this until we're actually contacted by the purchaser at the tax sale. And that's, that's what prompted us to, to make this, this protest.
Okay. So, I'm confused. So, you're, you're representing the lien holder, correct?
Yes, we're representing as Security Services.
So, um, okay.
Yeah, it's, Marilyn Bates is the short, we don't have a full name of the firm.
And you filed, and you filed the, the protest.
Marlin Bates based it, I'm paralegal.
Yeah, and so, you're, you filed it on the basis that, that, that the county is looking for the, the tax portion of it and not necessarily to cure the lien portion. Is that?
No, they're filing, Commissioner.
Correct.
They're, they're filing on the basis that I failed to notify the attorneys who were representing Security Service, and that, like I said, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, what would have happened if we had been notice? We would have contacted our client immediately, let them know the urgency of the situation. We would have told them to pay the, the taxes and then added on to their arrears, and we would have continued with our foreclosure.
All right, yeah, so you're going through a foreclosure process. Okay.
So, we, okay.
All right.
So, compound the issue if we were to deny appeal.
Come on up.
My mom, Patricia Collins, the owner of the property.
And I'm Amber Collins, I am her daughter, and I live with her, and I'm her caretaker.
Okay.
So, about five years ago, my taxes that I owe, I was, well, attacked at work. I, I would rather not get into that, if, if that's okay. I worked at the state mental hospital, but it left me, I had a heart failure, and I went into respiratory failure and had to be off work for, you know, for four months. So, when I, when I tried to go back to work, I, I, I couldn't. I had seizure, and when, I'm a nurse, I'm RN, and I, I love working, but I have been, the doctors won't.
The doctors wrote a letter that said she, it pretty much says she cannot walk, talk, and do her job. She has congestive heart failure, COPD, Tophie Motles, which is Broken Heart Syndrome, so part of your heart, muscle in your heart freezes, sometimes it starts beating again. In mom's case, it has not, it changes the shape of your heart. So, it's, and it's made her have a lot of issues with thinking clearly and fogginess. And so, it was autoimmune. First, it started out as autoimmune while she was working. She'd been sick, and then in 2001, Kylie, 20?
20.
Is when she had the episode at work where she, part of her heart froze and all of that, and then she'd been out, she's been out of work trying to claim disability.
Trying to get, trying to get on disability, which takes a long time. And so, I've, I've had no income, or I would be paying my taxes. But I now have, have been approved for spousal.
Survivor's benefits.
Survivor's benefits. And so, it should, and, and I'm working towards getting full disability, but the spousal benefits should be enough to help me start paying on the taxes. And I was also going to try to take out my retirement so that I could, could pay on the taxes. I just.
So, where?
I have a hard time, I, I lose my thoughts. I can't keep track of, of, of thoughts, of, of letters. Some letters, and a lot of the letters that these, that the, the security bank or whoever, it, it changed hands so many times, because it, it went from Geneva Federal Credit Union to someone else, to finally this first security. And I was making, I was making the payments to them, and they would not give me receipts. And because technically, nobody really knew who had my loan, who had the bank or whatever, and so, everyone I talked to was like, well, if you're not getting any receipts, you don't even know if you're paying or if you're paying anyone, you know, or if someone is, is just taking the money. And, and my daughter went with me once to try to figure out why they won't give me no receipts. So.
If, so basically, your, your daughters are helping you through this process?
Trying to figure out this process that started, what, who are we actually paying? The lien holder? Is that even what's really truly happening? We were definitely informed and had conversations with the, the 3% and with now her trying to get on disability so we can pay taxes, so we can pay things like that. So, it is this very weird 3% circumstance, foreclosure, who are actually we are lending to, and who's that money going to, that we've been talking to people even today to figure that part out, this big, this, this big complicated mess that we're left with.
Because I, I'm total, I totally, my house is totally paid off. I've totally paid my house off. I mean, it was totally paid off, it was just this, this taxes and, and the loan that my, my husband had. But I, so now, I'm, now that I'm getting spousal benefits, I should be able to pay, and I most definitely should be able to get on social security, but as you know, it's like a long, a long process. It's a long process, and I.
Kind of where we're at today.
Okay.
So, so, so let me.
I'll go ahead. I was going to say, but what we're focusing on is whether or not to go forward with the, the tax sale and, and support the protest or not.
Yeah, what would you like?
The thing is, here's, here's the thing, and if I'm wrong in any of these numbers, Burt, just correct me on it, I'm sure they're going to be off, because I just was writing them down quick. But you, you owe, is it $25,000 roughly on the taxes? And then the lien that's on there was another 40, 40,000 or 45,000?
Which, which we are going into debate about because of the, we didn't know.
Because I took the loan out for 15,000, and you know, these, the bank, whoever, whatever bank it is.
Whatever it is, that's, that's the lien, right? That's the lien that you have on there?
And he notices of like.
That we're going through the process of figuring out who actually had it, what do we actually owe?
Yeah.
So, get help through that.
Who do you pay?
And so.
I pay.
I haven't received, like you, you know, you need to pay this much each month, you need to do, I, I haven't received anything.
Nevertheless, with, with that, you know, this, this 3% interest sold at $160,000 roughly.
Right.
And so, if you take off the 25 and roughly the 45 on the lien on there, you're about $90,000 that would come back to you.
And you still own 97% of your home.
And, and you still own 97% of your home. Now, when that finally transfers through a sale into the future, because if you, if you foreclo, if it goes through foreclosure?
And I want it.
Yes. We just went through a phone call today with someone who's able to stop foreclosure today.
They thought they would be able to.
So, we are working on that foreclosure situation.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if you understand the opportunity that you might have.
You may have an opportunity to pay all the taxes off.
Yes.
To pay off the loan. And still own 97% of the house. And all that means is that when you sell the house, you get 97%.
Of the sale.
Of the sale, and the 3% would go to the person who purchased.
Sorry, let me clarify that. It's, the law guarantees the pro-rata share or the amount paid plus 12%. So.
Yeah, or the amount paid plus 12%, which.
So, they would, they would effectively owe basically back to the tax sale buyer at the point of sale, if they were, if you were to sell, say next year, they would owe roughly back $180,000 back to the tax sale buyer.
So, you may have the opportunity to pay off the loan, get $90,000 in your pocket, still live in the house, and you'd have $90,000 to live off of. They would not, that would not take you out of your house.
Doesn't take you out.
So.
And they can't, and they can't go through the foreclosure.
You could live there if you wanted, and then when you sell the house, you just have to pay back that portion. But you'll have, your loan is paid, your taxes are paid, there's $90,000 left over that you can live on until you're able to get through the soc, the social security process.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're.
And then, yeah, that's what I'm telling you. That's what we're saying. You, you may not want us to reverse this sale.
So, it might, it'd be in my best interest, because I really.
Pay your loan off, pay your taxes off.
Have money in the bank and then have to pay back later.
And then, when you pass away, me and trust and Kylie can decide what we want to do.
Well, okay.
Do you see what I mean? Like, this may have.
I, well, I.
This unfortunate situation may turn out to not be so unfortunate.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And mostly.
And you don't actually have to decide that. We could continue this a week if you want.
Can we continue it a week? Or what's our deadline?
It sounds like it, it sounds like that would benefit me.
Let's wait, let's see what we can do.
There are probably a couple of things that need to be considered here. Obviously, the bank's position.
The bank needs to be made whole, which would be part of this.
Be made whole, and I think the bank has to agree that this would, this would be effective way to, right now, in terms of our, our statutory duty to, to notify, I have openly admitted I have failed in, in this regard in notifying the attorneys for the bank. I did notify the bank.
You did notify the bank.
But I did not notify the attorney. So, we do have a deficiency of notice there. But if the bank is willing to accept the sale because they can be made whole, that's one factor. The other factor here too, and I don't know if they're online and willing to, but they were notified of, of the meeting, there's, there's the, the original bid, there's the winning bidders who, who purchased the property at the sale, and then also, since then, there has been a new deed of trust recorded for the amount that was paid by the winning bidder, and that, and the, the, the addressee on that deed of trust has also been notified. I don't know if they're in attendance and, and would like to, you know, make their interest known. The recording of the deed of trust, to me, says that the winning bidders, even though they're, they only gain 3%, have an intention of wanting to see the sale stand. But I don't know that. I'm only, I'm making assumption based on a document that's been recorded and worked by a recorder's office, which, by the way, for, for, just if we're keeping record, at lightning speed, the, we've, we've, the, the additional records that we hired, they've, they've done a great job. That document was, was worked and recorded within two weeks. So, I just want to give the, you know, props to the recorder's office on, on this one thing, for sure.
Absolutely.
But, but yeah, so I don't know, I don't know how the, I, I don't know how the bank feels about the circum, the circumstance, and I don't know how the winning bidder feels about the circumstance.
If we can give it a week, we should give it a week.
Is the weekend off two weeks, or what do we need to do with this?
That's, that's a great question. I believe, you know, Mr. Bates' paralegal is on there, well, he was. He, I think maybe, I, I imagine maybe Mr. Bates would like to be able to present his. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest that we, we allow at least a week for Marlin to, to, to speak to a, our client about what, what's happened here and to, and to present in a week.
And perhaps I could even try to make an additional effort to get ahold of the winning bidder and/or their, the, the lien holder or whoever the, the group that is, the, the winning bidders, and maybe get them to express their, their desire before the commission as well about whether the sale should stand or be overturned.
You, you said at least a week. Do you need two weeks, or is a week sufficient?
A week is sufficient.
A week would be, would suffice, then, okay. Okay.
Actually, Commissioners, can we make that two weeks? I will be gone next week.
Why can't you be back?
I'm sorry. I will be leaving that day to, to go, to go on a trip to Southern Utah. I apologize. If we can make that two weeks, that would be. I mean, you don't necessarily need me here for, I've already talked plenty if you don't want me to be here, so.
No, we absolutely need you here.
But you're doing the research, so.
So, it looks like we have.
I'll have a motion. I'll make a motion that we continue item number six for two weeks.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three, zero. Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Thank you, and it'll help me to have time to understand everything I.
Yep, no worries.
You spent a lifetime working for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we are on. Okay, we held item number 18.
Number seven.
Excuse me, we.
So, Richard, my only question on this is consistent with the past questions, and that is, is that I have, I have no problem in doing this like we've done in the past for it.
This is the third year that they requested it.
Yep. It's just that we get a report, a report back on, on the, you know, the best interest and how, and how it worked and so forth. That's, that's my only request. With, other than that, I am, I'm willing to move forward and approve, unless there's any other questions.
No. I remember this exact same one last year.
So, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number seven with the request that they, they give us a report back on the, on, on their event. Okay.
You have a second on that?
Yep, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Look for that report.
It might be everything. Tabled that, continued that.
Continue twenty-five.
Continued that.
Twenty-seven. I think we now are ready for public comment. And then we'll go to close. So are there any comments on some of the topics we've covered today? Seeing none? Any online, Alice? None online? Then we are, we concluded our regular agenda, we're going into closed session now. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, well, since there's two of us, I less, suspend a rule so that two of us can vote.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we bring back onto our regular agenda, item number eighteen.
And I can second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes two zero. The item eighteen is approve and authorize an extension of leave without pay per human resource leave policy and ADA accommodation.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Like to make a motion that we approve and authorize the extension of leave without pay as stated in number eighteen on our regular agenda.
And I can second that, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes two zero. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
And I can second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. You waited an hour for this.